All right, can everybody hear me okay?
I can hear you.
Excellent, so it is eighteen oh four and or six oh four, we'll call the call the meeting to order. So first we'll start off with changes to the agenda.
So we we do have two things that have been requested to add to the agenda. One of them is a programming request and a consideration of use of funds by Bridget Corby. And the other is an executive session regarding pending or probable civil litigation. So that would need to be an executive session.
So with that, is there a change to how we want to line up the agenda?
That that's up to you guys.
Well, we do need to have an executive session. Do we have to have two separate executive sessions, or can we do an executive session for that? I'm confused as we have one on the agenda, but it sounds like.
Yeah, you have to you have to go into executive session separately for each type of item that you're that you're warning it for, and those are the items that you can discuss in the executive session, so. Depending on how you want to approach some things today. You you there's two executive sessions.
Unmuted.
And I just told you about a potential third.
Well, so we can go through up to correspondence. When we make the motions to move into executive session, can we potentially move to for all those purposes and have an executive session to discuss that? It says just make everyone's time run smoother, is that appropriate, Bob?
You know, it's a great question, Abby. I don't know, and so it's probably safer to not do that. I know it's gonna be a pain on that because having putting everybody in the waiting room and then back in again takes a few minutes. But if there's action taken after each one, I think it just it feels cleaner, more transparent to do it separately. And then after tonight, I could I could find out from legal advice whether or not we could streamline in the future, but for tonight, I just being new to this still, I'm just wanna be as transparent with the public as possible.
That sounds great. So is other than those executive sessions, so we're gonna move in executive session, so we have new business. We do need to fill the vacant board seat and reorganize the board. And then possibly add in before a staffing update or discussion, an executive session?
And which one would that be? Is that the if needed on the agenda?
Yes. The public knowledge regarding contract, is that that the one?
Contract negotiation?
Um, yes, cuz I think that would be important to have the board updated prior to. You know, we need to know the information for a staffing update.
That would your your what you're asking, what you're asking is to put that in between reorganizing the board and the staffing update?
Correct.
All right. So that's that's up to you two, you really just need to agree to do that. And and agree to potentially add the third one and potentially add the Corby request to the agenda. And then that would be also in a new business, so.
I think even with what we're dealing with tonight, since that request just came through, we can table that to the next meeting. I'm not sure the urgency on that, but.
I think that we should probably discuss that, it sounded like, it sounds like it could be urgent.
Oh, okay. So then that would need to be, is that correspondence cuz if so, I didn't receive it?
I didn't receive it either.
So Bob, would that be something that would go under correspondence received to you?
Uh, you guys were CC'd on it, it was an email on Sunday titled Request for the Board.
Sunday, that was the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, that's correct, yep.
That's the request regarding the programming and the funds.
Use of surplus funds, yep.
Yes, so are we saying to table that one or the other possible executive session? For the, are you talking about the additions to the agenda, tabling this or tabling the other executive session that you mentioned?
Cuz as I got. I was talking about surplus funds, but I'm also not seeing that email.
Oh, I did see it.
I don't know.
I responded.
Well, maybe that's why it's probably filtered some way where there's a it's not showing it from Bridget now, I gotta change that setting, I guess.
Yeah, I still responded on the twenty-third, so just.
You you responded on the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't care.
Okay, well, again, I don't know, I can't find that, I'm not recalling it. So my what I'm trying to figure out is we're making an adjustment to the agenda, so we have to add in these executive sessions, and I just wanna make sure we're placing them on the agenda during the subject of changes to the agenda in the appropriate places. So it's kind of challenging, since I'm not really clear on all the, what each each piece is for, as to where it's gonna fit, so. Bob, any assistance from you and where that would go would be helpful.
So what I'm hearing is three things, I'm hearing your your suggestion to change the agenda to move this the executive session for contract negotiations in in between two items on the new business list. And that's one, two.
Yes.
I I hear Rory saying that we should consider we should at least hear the Corby request and have some conversation potentially about that. That would be a new business item. I guess it could come under correspondence, I suppose. If that's how you want to treat it. And then the third item is my request for a potentially a third executive session this evening.
Okay, so my my thought, no, that's that's, so I do believe that Bridget Corby's request is important, maybe it can go under correspondence, or our next regular meeting is on the fifteenth, is it?
I believe so, yep.
Yeah, so.
Since I haven't seen it, I would just like to the chance to read it before addressing it in public is my thing.
So you could enter it in as correspondence and just not have action on it tonight if you choose not to.
Okay.
And you could put on your for action on the next meeting if you choose to do so.
Perfect.
I think that sounds reasonable.
Okay. So those, so so far you've made two of the three decisions. The third one is about the third potential executive session. And that could be at the end. There's not gonna be, there's not gonna be action coming out of that one, so.
Out of that executive and and, you know, inform the. I didn't hear you, Bob, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it's a it's an executive session regarding pending or probable civil litigation.
Okay, so that would executive session number would be four, and then we'd have adjourned be five.
Yes, that sounds correct.
All right, do you are you clear with that, Rory?
I mean, I think so, but for the topic on the programming and use of funds, are we gonna put it in correspondence today and then, okay.
As correspondence, we just can't act on it, we can, if we need to act on it, we'll we'll move it to the next meeting.
Okay.
All right, so then next on the agenda is public comment. Are there folks out there in Zoom land, hands up?
We have Dan Corby. You, so Abby, as as vice chair, you have to call on Dan, recognize him.
Okay, Dan Corby?
I'm just identifying who is raising their hands for you.
Thank you.
And Bridget both have their hands up.
Okay, we'll start with Dan.
Am I off mute?
Uh, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Great, I would just like to add the urgency to the board around Bridget Corby's request. This was a topic that we've raised multiple times, it's regarding funding for art and special needs in regards to counseling. These are positions that had been lined up with existing people that were doing the jobs last year, and they are holding spots for us. If we do not act on this with urgency, we are not only going to lose those folks that the kids loved and appreciated, especially Ms. Bailey with the art program, to potentially other schools or not, so I urge you to rethink that positioning and act on that today, April fifteenth is two weeks before the start of school, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, Bridget?
Um, I guess just the kind of echoing in that and trying to understand if there's a better way to get communication to Abby, cuz this was sent Sunday night. So that we're giving you enough time to review before the board meeting, because I I do think that there's a sense of urgency in all of this.
Yeah, I can answer that for Abby if there's a better way to communicate.
Okay, any more public comment? Erin Keogh?
Yes, I had a question, or I guess it's more a question about letting the community know that this person was hired to find out on, you know, Facebook through a, an ad. I think that was not doing the town or the parents or the children justice, there was no information that went out. There was also a meet and greet that went out, I threw a school system email that did not include all of the town. Uh, so potential or not, so I I feel that wasn't correct. And then an email came out from Ms. Kramer about one o'clock, I believe, on Tuesday, saying there was a meet and greet at six. So that seems just very strange there, and the questions that, you know, I would have asked, you know, if I were able to attend that meeting, but there was short notices, what was the last five years of her work experience, and that seems to like dropped off the board?
Thank you, Erin, for, so those are kind of compounded together, so one, as far as to start with the communication, I, that was, you know, misunderstanding between Bob and I. So I I didn't realize that families hadn't been notified, and because of that same school system email that you're talking about, I didn't get those emails, they went to an email address I don't ever use. So I was unaware of communications, so, you know, we're facing a lot of new things. You know, new superintendent who's dealing with his new staff, a new board. There's, this is, you know, not typically the time of year that we have all of these things going, so everyone is doing the best that they can, but I agree that that is, it shouldn't have happened that way, and that is not, that's not the way it should go. I was concerned when I found out I hadn't gotten emails that I had reached out to Jenna to make sure that she, you know, was emailing people, because I didn't know what emails things were sent to. And I wanted people to know so that nobody missed missed out completely. And so I I can, that's that's what I kind of own on my end and and let, you know, let everyone know that that is clearly something we will be addressing and making sure we improve on. But that, you know, it wasn't with any intent other than to support advertising for that position, and you know, that's that's pretty much what I can add to that, I don't know if Bob, if you wanna add anything?
Yeah, I mean, I can just tell the communication tool that the SU and and districts use is historically been through our school. It's called Swift K twelve, and it's a robo all an email system, it operates off of whatever emails are in the system. Obviously, without having staff up there at the school over the summer, it we're operating under assumption that what's in power schools accurate. And as Abby just mentioned, hers was not accurate, so she didn't even get the message. But that was in my email out, if you did not receive it, was an apology for miscommunication on my part as far as like not sharing that information in a timely way. And it clearly didn't go to everybody.
I didn't get it either.
And I don't know, well, it would only be to parents, that's that's the system that uses, it's only the parents of the school, it doesn't go to the whole community. And so if you don't have a child in the school, if your child's been pulled out for homeschooling, or if your child attends another location, you might not be in the system, so you can just imagine, so it's our assumption, and that's how things operate, Leland Grace, how things operate in the districts. My assumption is that that information would all be up to date and accurate. And I don't know, maybe Wyndham School didn't utilize that tool in the past, and so therefore, having that stuff be updated wasn't an important important thing cuz that wasn't utilized, I don't know, I all I can say is I apologize for the lateness of it, and and then, you know, not having staff up there is further complicated, those types of communications. I don't have any other hands in Zoom land for public comment?
I don't see any other hands up, so if there's anyone else? There is, uh, there's one iPhone on there, I don't know who you are, but name's here, that's probably my husband. No, you changed your name, um, somebody, if you could just change your name on there, so we know who's on the call. That would be greatly appreciated. So then if there's no more public comments, we can move on to correspondence? Bob, do you have any correspondence you'd like to share?
Well, you guys received one from Ron and the one we referenced earlier from Bridget. So I know that minimally Rory has those two, I don't know.
I definitely have Bridget's, let me look.
Ron requested that his be read, so. I can read it if you don't have it.
Do you have the date from that one?
It was in the last day or so.
I'm happy to read Bridget's. I don't have anything from Ron.
Yeah, Ron sent it, I'm sorry, Ron sent it to Abby and I at three thirty six.
Okay, so I don't have.
Yeah. Abby, do do you wanna read that as chair as vice chair, acting chair?
Helps to if I'm unmuted, so hold on a second here. Okay, hello, Abby, Rory and Bob. Please read this into the public comment for a may be later or unable to attend tonight's special meeting. I am so happy with our granddaughter's experience at WES and applaud the work of the board and the WCSU staff in moving forward for this coming year. I continue to listen and regret that there are others whose experiences are not feeling similar, but hope to see us all together with energetic optimism in partnership with our new Wyndham Elementary team. I am eager to continue to learn what we can do better to make this school work for the greater good, thank you, Ron.
Rory, you do have Bridget's, correct?
I've got Bridget's. Bridget, you all right with me reading this?
Yes, please.
I would like to put in a request to the board for the next special meeting. If tuition requests are denied, will the board authorize the use of surplus funds for art and one more hour per week of counseling? Elizabeth Samansky through Chrissy Webster LLC is scheduled to come in for three hours per week, which is a drop from last year's eight hours per week. Currently, we have ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars in the budget for Elizabeth. In order to add one more hour, it would cost an additional thirty-six hundred dollars. Casey Bailey Junker is still available for the same Thursday afternoon time slot we had last year. She would cost between seven and eight thousand dollars, Lori would be able to provide more specific numbers as to as to where came in at the end of the year. There, okay, sorry if I messed that up, I think I got it, there are.
There where we came in at the end of the year.
Where we came in at the end of the year, there are supplies left from last year, my guess is she would need a few hundred dollars to add to, refresh what we have. There are grants that opened up in September, Rory had connected with Thrifty Attic, but we could start the school year with confirmed funding. If grants are approved, it would be a savings after. Having worked with both Elizabeth and Casey, I can't express enough how great they are with the students at Wyndham Elementary School. They have so much value towards the kids' social, emotional health, and with the changes everyone is experiencing, having more familiar faces and programs would add to a smooth transition. Please reach out with any questions on the information I've provided, thank you.
Love it, Bridget, thank you.
Thanks, Bridget.
The only other correspondent I received was another tuition request. So I'll just add that to the pile of other tuition requests that we already had.
Oh, I did get the correspondence from Erin regarding the same thing, Erin, do you feel like I answered your question enough, or is there something more that you would like me to add to that?
No, I think it's good.
Thank you, and we'll we'll make sure we're working better so that that's a, that's not the case going forward.
And Abby, I stand corrected, the other two communications or your correspondence we have were both letters of intent for the open positions, but I didn't mention that earlier cuz we have that as a separate agenda item.
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, if there is not any further correspondence, then we are moving on to the vacant board seat. So I did receive multiple letters as well, I think that we all saw those, and I'm prepared with.
Abby, you're breaking up on us, Abby.
With a motion?
I'm sorry, Abby, we can't hear what you're saying, it seems to be pretty broken up.
I'm sorry, does it sound better now?
Yes.
Okay, that's why I have my camera off, I think we got a storm coming in, so trying to limit my usage here. So I would, I did receive, as we all did, correspondence from various folks with interest. And I I am prepared to make a motion to appoint someone from what was received, so.
Do you wanna?
Can we just make sure that we all got the same letters? I only saw two. Is that what?
And I think and I think you can say who they are from, so everyone's on the same page.
Okay, so I saw a letter of interest from Erin Keogh and from Daniel Roth.
Those are also the two that I have.
Okay.
Yes. So is there, are we prepared to, for me to make a motion?
Can't have discussion until you make a motion, right?
Beautiful, so I'm gonna move that we appoint Daniel Roth to the board. Can I get a second?
I second.
Discussion?
Usually the motion maker goes first with discussion.
So I
You're breaking up again.
That Daniel really outlined how he would complement that role in in the community, and it just, it was very well written. So was Erin's is very well written, it was, it's it's really tough, I I I do adore Erin. So this was a was a tough, tough call for me to make. But with with the way that and what the information that was presented from Daniel, I really, I really felt that that would be a good fit for what we're looking for as far as the 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 future of the community and and ideas of how to be innovative and collaborative, so that was, that's my my discussion on that.
You do have two hands in Zoom land?
Bridget Blanchard and Kathy Edgerly, but I didn't see who had their hand raised first, so I'm sorry. So although it's Bridget because.
Yeah, Bridget. Bridget, we'll go with Bridget first?
Oh, thank you, um, I have not met Daniel Roth, I don't think I've seen him at a board meeting before, so I just wondered if he could pop in and say hello to us.
He's on the meeting tonight, he's on the meeting right now.
Great.
Hi. Is this typical to just kind of respond to questions? I don't wanna do anything out of order.
Vice chair is.
Why don't you share, I mean, you could even, it's up to you, Daniel, just share a little bit of, you know, who you are and you know, why why you have interest in being on the board?
Sure. So me and my family moved not last September, but September before. And we just had our first daughter, Selby, she just turned one, and I I think the biggest reason, you know, that I want to join the school board is of her future, I I definitely see a path of of enrolling her at Wyndham School and, you know, would like to, you know, strengthen the bond with her. Sorry, there's an echo. And, you know, offer any, you know, thing I can do to help the town in terms of support or, you know, board member seat, et cetera. My background is in econometrics, so I work as a regulator for the railroad, specifically tank cars, so. You know, I I think Abby spoke to a unique mindset. And my mindset is very analytical, I'm a statistician by trade. So I think that's what I'd be offering. But I also have a lot of passion, my my wife is an artist, I'm a musician, I play drums, piano, I compose. I sing at Brattleboro Concert Choir. And just to answer your question, Bridget, I have gone to a couple of board meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Daniel. Kathy Edgerly?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say that it's my understanding, the board really, I mean, the board can appoint any person they wish, correct? They don't have to have written a letter, they don't have, it it is just the discretion for replacement of this person whose term I assume will expire in March of twenty twenty-four, when Beth's term would have expired. But maybe and maybe everybody else knows that, but I didn't hear that said, so it isn't like this is an election, this is an appointment, and I think there's a difference.
You are correct, Kathy, so thank you, thank you for pointing that out, but you know, Bob had mentioned at the last meeting, how, you know, it is also as well, I also read at the last meeting, kind of what we would be looking for in in people who have interest. I do feel kind of that was really well outlined by both those individuals. And like I said, it's it was it was a hard situation, and we do, we do not have to discuss that technically publicly. We could just appoint, but I I have a lot of respect for Erin Keogh, and I I think she's an amazing community member. And this was a really tough call, but like I said, Daniel, your vision, the way that you, what you, the way you wrote your letter and the content was really impressive, and what you can offer, I think, is really wonderful, they both have wonderful things, but I'm I'm, my motion is to appoint Daniel Roth. So is there further discussion, Maureen Bell?
We cannot hear you, Maureen. If you are speaking, your microphone might not be working effectively.
Believe you might still be muted, Maureen.
Well, she was unmuted. I think it was a microphone issue.
Maybe she could type her comment in the chat.
No, we don't have a chat. It's not allowed during recorded meetings because the chat does not get recorded, so it's not officially part of the record.
Got it.
No problems. But just to just to restate Kathy's, just we are on the same page of there. The board did ask for letters of interest. And they put on the agenda to decide that tonight. And you're right in saying that the board can appoint. It is for the duration of Beth's term, which is through March to the town meeting. And they do not have, they can choose anyone they wish. But Maureen, his hand is back up. You want to try it again? We'll have no audio from you, Maureen. Sorry.
Well, unfortunately, I don't think we're going to get to hear Maureen. And if there is any further discussion, you can call the question. So motion on the floor is to appoint Daniel Roth to the board. All those in favor?
Well, Abby, just for just for clarity, Abby, that with a Zoom meeting, you do you do votes for the roll call, so you actually have to each say your vote individually.
Okay. Abigail Pelton, aye.
Rory Russell, aye.
All right, so the motion passes, which means you have a new board member.
Welcome, Daniel.
So we can reorganize and elect next on the agenda, elect a chair. However, I do want to point out that the 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 new member, welcome Dan, is not able to participate in voting until he's taken the oath of office from your town clerk. So he can, I believe he can be like he can obviously be in the meeting. I don't I honestly don't know about executive session. I don't know how that works for someone that hasn't. I should have anticipated this, and I did not, and I apologize.
Is that a form or do I go down to the clerk? Is there a process for that?
Yeah, I believe it's the town clerk historically. Rory and Abby, is that what you guys did?
Well, I did it at town meeting, but yeah, if that would be the case is I you would have to go to the, well, actually, I'm not sure. Is it the town or the supervisor union?
No, it's not that. It has to be done at your town official, someone who can administer.
The town clerk.
Yep.
Yeah. So I again, this is one of those things that I again, this is new and I'm new and I'm apologizing again for the thousandth time. Probably not done apologizing for being new. Just Wyndham has a lot of different things happening, as you as you know, and so you're really testing my my newness pretty pretty quickly out of the bat. There's two avenues you could go. You could do your election and select your new chair and then go from there. And you after you do that, I think the two courses of action would be to allow him into executive sessions. But he would not be able to vote on any action coming out of executive session or on anything else until he's taken the oath. Or he could you could, in a sense, I guess, say he's not technically on the board until he's taken the oath. And then you have to wait to join executive session until after he's taken the oath. I don't know if anybody else in the meeting knows the proper sequence here. I am open to that because I honestly do not know. Bridget has a hand up.
I don't know, but I would recommend erring on the side of caution, just to be sure, and maybe he doesn't enter executive session until he's been sworn in. I think that's a that's that's a safe way to go.
Yeah, whatever's fair.
Maureen has a hand.
Yes, Maureen on the call, she probably knows.
Can you hear me?
Yes, they can hear you.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that. I'm having trouble with my speaker and my mic. No, I don't know about him allowing being allowed to go into executive session, but I wanted to point out, I don't know if the school board is the same as the select board. If it is, he will hold the office until the next town meeting. If there's a special town meeting before the regularly scheduled town meeting, his term would be up then, and he would need to run again at that point, if there's a special town meeting before the regular one.
I am not aware.
Yeah, my understanding is he just completes the term once appointed unless this town creates a special meeting with that purpose on the agenda.
Yeah, I thought that he would finish out.
The board would authorize to do a special vote. And then the special vote would, if the board does not, then he stays appointed until his term, until the term that he's filling is up.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. And I think we can we can sort all that out after, but it sounds like what I'm hearing, at least Rory say, and I think my suggestion and is probably similar, is to have him not join the executive session until he's sworn in. But he could still be elected to a position. He could even be elected chair of the board, and he just wouldn't be in the vice chair would continue to run that or however that plays itself out. So I think we can still include him in the election process. He just can't serve in that position until he's been sworn in, if that makes sense to people.
Sounds accurate to me.
Okay, so as superintendent, since you do not have an acting chair, I will start off by asking for nominations for a chairperson.
I nominate Abby for chair.
Seconded.
Have any other nominations?
Nominate Rory for vice chair.
Well, hold on, we gotta we gotta decide chair first.
Okay.
So I have a question. Is it, are we the only ones that are able to nominate this?
It's only members, and so since it's not a valid number, it's really just the two of you. So unless you want to nominate each other and then vote, you have one nomination and you've seconded it.
Sounds like a stalemate.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like you have any second nominations coming. So would ask for all those in favor of Abby as chair. I will start with Rory as the motion maker.
I make a motion.
Yeah, well, you did. You nominated her. So yeah, I guess you would. You're I'm asking you to vote on that.
Okay. Rory Russell, I vote in favor of Abigail Pelton.
All right.
As as chair.
Aye.
Abby.
Abigail Pelton.
Two, so it's unanimous. All right, Abby, we have a new chair, so I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Abby. And then Abby, your next role would be to facilitate the election of a vice chair.
I would motion to nominate Rory as the vice chair. Do I have a second, Rory?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, and then we need to nominate a clerk. I would nominate Daniel as the clerk. Do we have a second?
I second, but we don't, I'm sorry, we don't have to wait to reorganize before he's sworn in.
So we can we can appoint him and then he has to sign his oath. So he'll be appointed as that, and then he'll go and connect with Ellen and get that sworn in.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention that.
Oh, you're good. No worries.
Yep. And in the meantime, I would suggest that Rory continues as acting clerk to finish the notes for today's meeting until Dan's able to take it over from that.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. The rest of the stuff that you guys have argued that goes in a reorg, unless you want to make changes to that, you're authorized, paper of record, meeting time, dates, schedules, all those sorts of things. You probably don't have to do. However, we do, I do want to point out that the chair of the of the Wyndham Board also serves on the SU Board. And you can also appoint your vice chair to attend in your chair stead if she is unable to attend. Or really anybody you can identify to to serve in her her stead if she's unable to attend the WCSU meeting as the Wyndham Board rep.
Did we did we both vote on the last thing for vice president? Our vice chair, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think, I'm sorry, did we skip voting for Dan for clerk?
Yeah, because I interrupted.
Oh, my bad. Okay, so you got to vote on Dan as clerk. Sorry, my bad.
Aye.
I heard one aye, I didn't hear two.
Oh, aye.
Okay. So Abby, it sounds like you have a clerk, a vice chair, and a chair.
Right on. Welcome aboard, board.
All right. So take it away, Abby, on the agenda after filling the vacant board seat and reorganizing. Actually, the next thing you had was your executive session.
That is correct. So this is going to be the under.
This was number three executive session.
Okay, sure, reading the right one.
Yep.
Aye, aye, aye. So I moved.
Just just to restate, in certain in certain executive sessions, you need to find some, you need to move to find something first, vote on that. And then you move into, then you make a motion to move into executive session. Other types of executive sessions, you can go directly in. But for this type, you have to move to find et cetera, et cetera first, and then do the second part of motion into executive session. So go ahead, Abby.
Okay, I move to find that premature general public knowledge regarding contract negotiation would put the board at substantial disadvantage because the school boards is at risk of negotiation disadvantage of disgust in public. I make a motion for the board to enter.
Hold on, hold on. So you guys, you two, you have to vote on that first to accept that, to accept that move, the finding.
So Rory, could you second that?
Yeah, I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now I'll make the second piece. Okay, get in there, Bob.
We'll get there, we'll get there. We lost you. You're you're.
You're breaking up.
Start over.
You cut me out. Oh, son of a biscuit.
Start over.
How about now? Okay, round two. I make a motion for the board to enter executive session under Title I, Section 313 of the Vermont statutes, Legal Consultation, 313A1. Can I get a second?
I get your motion.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, it is eighteen forty seven or six forty seven, and we will be moving into executive session.
I will be moving you each one by one into the waiting room unless you can do it yourself somehow with a button. We'll start doing.
Okay, so we are are we've got everybody mostly back. It is eighteen fifty five or six fifty five. We are out of executive session and back into the meeting. No action was taken during executive session.
Action, sorry, just a quick correction, Abby, you can't take action in executive session. What you're saying is that there's no action to take coming out of executive session.
Yes, thank you. Correct. There's been there's no action being taken coming out of executive session. Thank you. Okay, so we are moving on to staffing update.
I can hold on on the staffing update if you'd like, Abby.
Yes, please. Thank you, Bob.
Yep. So as the as our as our poor communication did eventually reveal to people, we did hire a teaching principal. Her name is Jenna Kramer. And she has signed on and is under contract as of as of the end of last week. At this point, we have begun conducting interviews. We do not have a candidate finalized at this time for the the other teaching position. And the administrative assistant position is posted at this time, and there are no applicants for that at this time. That is your update on staffing.
Thank you.
Oh, I see Erin Keough has her hand raised. Go ahead, Erin.
So during my comment, I did wanted to ask the question about, you know, what was Jenna Kramer's work history for the last five years? I figured we just bring it up here, seeing if someone here could answer that.
All new territory. I am gonna say that I yeah, I guess I'm not entirely sure how to answer that. I believe she has been out of education for the last several years. But has been employed and has had background check completed.
Is she going under an emergency license, a provisionalary license, or under your license?
Nope, she is a fully licensed out of state waiting on reciprocity for both administrator and elementary educator.
Thank you. I see Bridget with your hand up. Go ahead, Bridget.
Yes, so I know that my correspondence was tabled to another meeting, but since we're talking staffing, I thought I'd bring it up again. The request that I put in was to be able to hire more staff because we have surplus funds for that. So it doesn't fill the teaching roles that we have that we need, but it does allow more staff that are consistent returning staff that our kids know to to be committed for the fall. And so I'm gonna throw it back out there and hope that it could be addressed because I just think that, you know, we're a month away and we have a lot of question marks still that I think parents would be feeling a lot better if the board was willing to discuss something like that.
I don't know how you feel, Abby. I'm open. I'm open to discuss that. I mean, I I understand your point, Bridget, but I'm not sure how we can address it now that.
Laurie Garland would also need to be involved in that. Um, I I hear what you're saying, Bob, and I don't, Bob, what is is Laurie available over the summer? Is she like, is she around?
She's available, yeah. And I can tell you that I did get a brief financial overview of your budget situation from her a week or two ago, prior to our last meeting. Because I want her to give me an analysis on hiring and the potential for tuitioning and all those things, just so I had an understanding of where the budget stood. I don't want to speak for her, but my understanding from her was that this fifty thousand dollar surplus that's being referenced, depending on some other costs, staffing costs, that is, depending on salary placement and healthcare selections and it was contract negotiations. It's it's possible that a chunk of that could be used up to restaff the building. When you built your budget in the spring, you built it based on the existing staff that you had. And so you just, you know, people come in with more experience in one direction or more education over here, or they take a healthcare plan, this other person didn't, and there's this, there's variability there, and you didn't, there isn't a significant cushion because at the time, the assumption was that people were returning. You didn't know they weren't. So you built it based on those numbers. So I mean, you do have a fifty thousand dollar surplus and you can spend it how you wish. But I think what Laurie would tell you is that there's a there's a reasonable chance, and again, you haven't filled the second position yet or the or the third position. But there's a reasonable chance that at least some of that is going to get used through just hiring some less staff. So that's what she briefed me on a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Bob. Is she able to attend a meeting so that families who have these types of questions can be getting, you know, the the specific? answers and the board would also be aware as to really what we're doing with our budget? Um, I don't know. Like I said, I know we're full steam ahead this summer, but that's not typical, um, because we're we got our own unique situation, right? So, but.
With notice, uh, she can definitely be at a board meeting, um, and I would also suggest, uh, that maybe Abby, you, me, and her sit down and review, um, the budget as your new position as board chair to look at that. And so you have a, a good working understanding of it as well. Um, but as, and me too, um, but that the three of us sit down, um, soon and have that conversation so we have a sense of what, what's what.
Excellent. Um, I, I, I do see your hand dance. Just, uh, be patient. I just want to, um, emphasize, I think probably what Dan's gonna say, uh, or echo, um, is, you know, that is something that is clearly, uh, important. I've always supported the counseling piece and the art piece, and we, we really need to look at that. But we also need to be paying attention to the full budget and having, you know, I think Lori needs to be a part of that. So I don't, um, don't think it would be wise for us to be making major decisions without knowing the funding source exactly. So, um, that's gonna be a priority, and I don't know, Bob, if there's any way we can, um, you know, connect as soon as possible to get that information.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can get the three of us together, um, very quickly, and then we can have her on, um, for the next meeting, um, as well.
So I just want to, um, add to that because I know how important this is to everybody, and it's important to me as well. And, um, given the, um, further discussion that needs to be had on our current budget and possible other uses that it may, we may need to use that extra money for, I'm happy to go ahead and continue to move forward with, um, the grants, the grant opportunities with Thrifty Attic. I had spoken to them earlier. I think it was earlier in the summer, late spring, when Bridget had brought it up initially, and any other opportunities, just so that we at least can have that when it's, when it's available to us.
Excellent. Thank you, Rory. Um, Dan? Thank you for your patience.
No problem, Abby. Thank you. I, I just want to reiterate, we're not asking for after-school funding programs. We're not asking for sports. We're asking for the basic fundamental needs for our kids. This should be budgeted for. This should be covered. This shouldn't be a ongoing yearly debate over and over and over again. You want support, you want to build bridges in this town, stuff like this needs to get put into our budget and be allotted for. I'm an artist. That's what I do. I make a living as an artist. Art is important. Our kids love it. I'm pretty sure every parent that has a kid in the school last year can tell you stories of what Ms. Bailey does for these kids. It's not just teaching them to paint. She brings educational opportunities in, grows these kids in a way. It's the number one thing my kids come home and constantly talk about from school. Nothing else that they learn there but what Ms. Bailey taught them. And I just think that this is basic needs, guys. This is why this school is not providing my kids what they deserve. If we have to fight every year for basic art, basic music, and counseling, you can't tell me you're giving my kids an equal opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Your next up is Erin Keogh.
All right, I'm sorry, I am losing signal back and forth here. I am not currently home. Um, so I just, I, what, I wanted to, I guess, clarify what Bob says is that right now Lori thinks that you're forecasting to go over budget and use the surplus?
Um, well, what she's saying is depending on how the hiring goes, you could use some of it, yes. Not necessarily all of it. Um, but that you could potentially be over budget with the actual specific budget lines for personnel, depending on healthcare plans, salaries, so on and so forth. She just wanted people to be aware of it. Um, again, the school, as a board, can decide to spend the money regardless, um, and potentially end up in a deficit budget. You don't know what this year's spending will be like in other areas. Um, it's just something that the board has to decide on their own how they want to approach. I just want to make sure they have the information that the full fifty grand may or may not be available for these sorts of things, depending on how hiring went.
Okay, okay, so I guess, you know, with, with that, is it, I, I guess the question would be from your conversation with Lori, and I understand everything else that you just said, from hiring, um, Ms. Kramer, uh, so are we projected as a forecast to be using that fifty thousand dollar surplus?
Well, you, you're, I mean, it's an incomplete picture, Erin, is unfortunately where we're at because we only have one of the three staff members hired. So, I mean, I, I, I can't say specifically that we are on track or not on track because we're, you know, we're two thirds of the people, or one third of the people, um, down. And that leaves quite a bit of variability.
No, I understand that. But if that, all the line items stayed the same, I mean, with the, you know, forecasting, would it be showing that we're over? I guess is the question, if everything else stayed the same as was, was budgeted.
If everything else stayed the same, you would be right around the same. Yeah, you'd be close.
Okay.
I have a question, but I don't know how to raise my hand.
Okay, Gail, is that Gail?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, hold on, Gail. We got Michael Pelton and, uh, Bridget Corby ahead of you, but we'll get you in the queue, okay?
Okay, yep.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Michael Pelton?
Um, so I'm thinking, uh, it's important for us to think about how things work in the budget, but I also recognize that art and counseling services are pretty important for our kids. Um, I'm wondering if we can, I think the art is sort of a no-brainer, uh, personally. I, I think that's pretty easy to kind of figure out where we need to go there. But, um, in terms of the counseling, I think it's important, perhaps somebody has a conversation with counselor. Um, we need to really reach out to her and really identify the needs of the, um, school. But she may say that we need even more time than we're thinking. I know Bridget asked her another hour, but what if she says that we need two? Maybe that's something that we need to look at. We need to really identify how much we need, and she's probably the best person to answer that question. Um, and then move forward from there. So I would recommend, um, at least from my personal perspective, that those conversations are had, and then I think the board already agreed to follow this up at the next regular meeting. Um, I think it would be appropriate for the board to follow that up at the next board meeting with the information in hand so that they can make an educated and reasonable, um, decision. Thank you.
Michael, uh, Bridget, uh, Bridget Corby, and then Gail. You're muted, Bridget.
Sorry, I was just so excited to talk. I forgot to take that step. Um, so before I get into what I was gonna say, I can actually answer some of those questions because they were things that we addressed, um, at the end of last year. Um, without a principal, I reached out to Bill and we had a back and forth. We talked to Elizabeth. I actually think Bob might have connected with her at some point as well more recently. Um, the budgeted amount that we have, we figured out was about three hours. And that, if she can come in and like bang out twenty minutes with each kid, and I think she's being a little bit more firm on what she is and isn't gonna do. So she's spending more direct time with the kids. Um, last year, she was involved in a lot more, um, administrative stuff that, you know, uh, took up a lot of her time. She's not available for, um, the eight hours because, um, through all of this, she's now contracted with another school. She's more coming back because she has, um, a relationship with our kids. And she, um, wasn't going to take us on because she, she does twenty hours with another school and also is working for a private practice, but felt like it was really important for our kids with how much transition that we were getting, um, to have another familiar face coming in, in the building. So, um, so where we landed, those numbers, those were discussed between, um, Bill, myself, and, uh, Elizabeth last year. To give you like a little bit of a, um, background, another option, um, so Bob is talking about how we have roughly fifty thousand dollars. We, you know, we might dip into that, um, if we have other employees that have different needs. Um, the board has the ability to authorize, you could say, we authorize Jenna to spend up to five thousand dollars today on art, knowing that we're revisiting this, and you're calling Casey and saying, we, we want you locked in. We don't have the full funds for the year, and, and we work with that, and we look at grants. And then if, um, that money is getting lower, we circle back and see what that surplus fund is. I don't think that the other, um, teaching position and the part-time admin would blow through fifty thousand extra dollars. So I think that, that there's a re, a reasonable assumption that you could authorize, like I said, up to five thousand dollars. Um, and then you're committed. So Elizabeth is committed for three hours. The goal is to add more time. Casey's not committed at all, and she's holding her Thursday afternoon, um, which I'll also point out is really great for the other staff because one more special gives them one more break that they typically don't get in Wyndham. Um, so there's a, there's a big broad picture here. You can authorize something without blowing through all of the money and without, um, it, there's a path forward if we're willing to do it. And I'm, I, I really will say that I think the board needs to like regain some points with some parents. And, um, no one's asking you to spend the full fifty. We're asking to commit something really specific to the kids.
Thank you for sharing that, Bridget.
Those are really good points, Bridget.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and just to re, recap, recap, recapture the, uh, Bridget's communication, the art would be in the neighborhood of seventy-eight thousand dollars, and the extra hour per week would be roughly, uh, thirty-six hundred dollars. So you're talking potentially eleven-six total, um, of the fif, of the fifty.
Right, and that's specifically what I think would be a great question for Lori. So, um, because as long as we're making sure we are, you know, she's got all the space math stuff. Um, it's, I think, very, a very reasonable thing. I agree and support it a hundred percent. But we, we do have to be, um, creative, and I really like your idea, Bridget, of like being able to kind of figure out a way, um, without making like a full-on commitment, and those are definitely things we need to explore. So thank you very much for, for, um, for sharing that idea because we're gonna look into it for certain and quickly.
Bridget, can I, can I ask Bridget one clarifying question? Abby, is that all right?
That's, sure.
Um, Bridget, the art teacher, you said that they, that obviously it was cut from the budget, not in, or is used with grants or whatever last year. Um, you said, I think what you said was that she's not committed at this point and is keeping the day open. Um, do you know if, um, is there a timeline on that? Is there, is, is a concern do you have around, like, her filling up with other stuff? Is that part of?
Yeah, so, so I actually, I just saw her, actually, this last week, she, um, if anyone sees any, she does a lot of pop-up art programs with the kids, and she was at the South Londonary Library. Um, she wants to come back. Um, she's semi-retired. And, um, it, it's a nice place for her to, you know, have an art program that's not being a part of a full-time staff. Um, but she does run a lot of like camps and programs, and so she very specifically said, I'll hold Thursday afternoon open. I'm really hoping for you. Um, so she is actively waiting and, and hoping for, um, some sort of an, an answer. Um, and to, the, I had raised my hand as well. Um, so Abby, I think what I was proposing was that you guys, um, not look into it. You know, take action. I'm, I was proposing you take action for a portion of it tonight so that we can, um, start that process. That was more what I had meant by, um, that up to five, not like a creative idea for later, but like an action item for now. And then maybe you add to it, or we get creative later.
My question on that is, would, uh, would they be willing to accept a smaller commitment in good faith that we are going to continue to provide funding? Do you know what I mean?
I think she would. I think she's like really flexible. Um, and, you know, originally when she, you know, signed on, um, she was actually negotiated at a lower rate for Wyndham than she typically would charge. Um, so we're also getting a little bit of, of a discount from her. Um, I think she's committed to the kids. She really likes the kids. I think that, um, she's also putting feelers out there. She was the one that mentioned Thrifty Attic and, um, and she, she's trying to help find the funding, the other places as well. So yes, I think that if there was a commitment, so the first Thursday of the school year, sorry if you hear my dogs barking in the background, um, uh, I think she would start with us that way.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, is there anything else you'd like to add, or can we, uh, move on to Gail? Okay, uh, Gil Wyman?
Okay, um, I totally agree with Bridget. I think you should get on with hiring the two of them. If we're gonna have a good school year, you need to make sure you've got the counseling and the art. The art teacher is terrific. I love seeing the art. Um, and I think somehow, if you commit to them, that we can find a way to raise the money for them. And that's all I have to say.
I agree. Thank you, Gil.
Thank you, Gil. Uh, we got Kathy Edgerly and then Michael Pelton.
Um, I completely agree also, and I wondered, could you do something like a letter of intent? So that you send her a letter of intent, and then you get a little time to do whatever you need to do. But you, you know, you do put something together that she can see, and, uh, you know, is that a, a, a vehicle that a school board can use?
That I'm not sure about.
I can try to answer that. I think, um, a letter of intent we use, uh, with, with employees, um, if we're, if it's contract time, but there's no, um, no contract settled at that point yet, so as an example, and it be, it is actually a legally binding document, um, in that particular case. I don't know in this situation because this is outside of a, of a union, which is what I'm describing. I, I don't know, but I, I would, I would, I would recommend the board not take that step unless they're actually ready to commit the funds. I know it sounds like I'm, I'm trying to, I just want to make sure the board's covered. You don't wanna, you don't wanna do a letter of intent and then find out later that you owe money that you decided after to not spend, so.
Yes, there's a, there's a commitment in the, in the letter of intent. So, uh, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Uh, Michael Pelton and Daniel Roth.
Um, I think I want to echo some of what's already been said, but, um, effectively, my understanding is neither one of these two things are part of the core curriculum, so they could be fundraised for. So if that's something that people want to do, they could total, we could totally fundraise for it.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Daniel?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo, uh, what Bridget and Erin are saying. Um, uh, you know, Bridget, I'm not officially a board member yet, but assuming that they let me swear in, uh, this isn't completely within my wheelhouse to, uh, look at both budgets and forecasts. So I'll, I'll look intently at it and see, yeah, see, see what's going on and, and audit and see, you know, make recommendations.
Thanks, Daniel.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up. Um, so I'm struggling with, I, I understand, um, I want to, I want to move forward with these things, so I understand the desire for action right now. Um, but I, I would like to just have people think about for a second that the, 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 yes, we are aware that there is these things we want, um, to start the school year off with. So the letter of intent, I think, um, it could be a very more lighthearted kind of correspondence as far as not only a letter of intent, but what is the willingness and how can we get commitment, but clearly they wouldn't, uh, be working until there was, uh, funding and set in place, right? Um, but with Daniel's background, once he's sworn in, like, that's gonna be a really, um, excellent addition to be looking into those things and, and, and communicating with, uh, uh, Lori Garland directly. Um, that's gonna be really valuable feedback for all of us, and um, you know, as much as you can always think you can shuffle some money some way or some the other, we could end up in a bind if we aren't making sure we're, we're spending the funds in the appropriate way, if that makes sense. So, um, I don't know if, uh, I guess I could say, as board chair, I will reach out directly, uh, to the art teacher. I guess I could say as board chair, I will reach out directly, uh, to the art teacher. Um, and have a, a conversation, um, and if there is further urgency before the next meeting where there is some kind of concern that this isn't gonna be. Um, a, an approved discussion and, and, uh, voted on item for the next agenda. That we'll have a, a special meeting or an emergency meeting, um, so that people can weigh in on that. I, I, um. I just want to make sure before we are authorizing the spending of funds. We've talked with Lori and we have the background on what's going on and we are working with mystery money because we haven't hired two positions. So it makes sense to really understand where we are at with our budget and I don't think as a board, we've had the opportunity to do that. So there's a lot of things that are out of whack, but we are going to get into a rhythm. We are going to get this stuff, uh, squared away and, um, I guess my question would be, uh, to the other board members. What are your thoughts on that? How are you feeling? That's, that's where I stand right now.
Um, I feel this is really important and I think that if we're planning to staff a school that we're gonna be doing, we're gonna be. Funding this somehow, so. I'm going to, like I said before, I'm gonna start moving on any grants that are out there that I can find that, um. We can use so we can have extra funds. That way if we do need to pay for the other teachers' health insurance or something like that, where maybe it's more expensive or. You know, I don't know what the specifics would be, but I think that short of writing a binding document about this or, or writing up a contract. That we're gonna have, we have to do this. So that's my, that's my thought on it. I understand that you, that we need to have a better understanding from Lori. But if we're planning on operating a school, these, these need to be in place.
Excellent. Thank you, Rory. Daniel, what are your thoughts?
Uh, I wasn't sure if, uh, it would apply to me until I swear, but I, I mean, I totally agree. Um, yeah, I, I would definitely reach out to both of them and, you know, don't put anything legally binding, but let's make sure that they understand that we're working through the problem and understand. Uh, that, hey, we, we do have a teacher and an admin that we need to hire, but. You know, there is possibility that we can get you in as well, and I think it sounds, you know, like a great opportunity for the kids, so. I, I haven't seen any numbers yet, folks, so, um, you know, until I see numbers, I can't offer any guidance at all, but. You know, once I do, you know, I could, I'll have a better picture of what we're looking at.
Thank you, Daniel. Um, uh, Bridget, I do see your hand, but, um, you've spoken a few times and I see Jimmy Corey's hand. Uh, Jimmy?
Actually, Crystal.
Listen, Jimmy.
I'm gonna, uh, remind the board that you can't just seek grants. You have to work with Lori at the WCSU because only specific grants. Can be used for funding people coming in the building.
I think we've had this discussion in the past.
Yes, thank you, Crystal, for that. Um, and, uh, you, you are correct. There's various types of grants out there and, um, we're very fortunate to have multiple avenues other than just, uh, the supervisor union. Um, as far as grant searching goes. So there's a lot of actually people look, that have already been looking into grants. Um, and as things are getting more, uh, stabilized, um, that is a much more, um. Like realistic prospect, right? So, um, but that's definitely a, a, been a big project for, I know, quite a few community members. Um, Bridget, go ahead, please.
Uh, so, uh, to clarify, you are correct. We did look at, um, if you can fund, there's a lot more flexibility in, in funding art. You can do it through fundraising and grants and there are a lot of grants, a lot of them don't open up till September, which is sort of where the request comes from is. Say we could spend up to knowing that you might, um, pull the funds in after the fact in a different way. Um, so if the board is not going to make any motion to authorize any portion of that, I would just ask for speed. Um, you know, we're talking about Casey's commitment and kind of keeping her on the hook and I just wanna remind everyone that, um. We have been put through the wringer this summer as a, as a school group and, um, families are still really struggling and this is, this is really hard. And anything the board can do, um, I think the fifty thousand dollars was actually referenced quite a bit when families were very angry that, hey, we have fifty thousand dollars. Maybe we fund these things here. Now we're at that moment. Um, if we're not taking an action tonight, I. Ask that you don't wait till the next board meeting because Casey needs a commitment, we need a commitment.
Between now and the next meeting, there will be definitely discussion and some, you know, behind the scenes work to try to get a solid plan. That we can present everybody with, that they feel, that you guys feel comfortable with.
Yeah, especially if there's deadlines, say by September, you know, we'll, we'll definitely get the ground running on that.
Dan Corby?
Sorry, couldn't find mute. Just, uh, just a friendly reminder, four weeks until the opening of school. And Daniel, I'm looking forward to working with you. Thanks for, uh, joining the board. Excited to see what you, you come up with. Um, but I think we, you know, we, we can cut through the, some layers here. There's no money to be found, right? There's no money to be found, so we can get creative, we can talk about the stuff. We need commitments. We need to make sure, and this is where I really urge this board, is you're gonna start working on a budget for the following year before you know it as well. Stop playing games with this kind of money. Budget for it. Put it in. Stop playing the game of we're gonna pass a budget through the town and then we're gonna force the parents to get creative with volunteers to supplement the education for our kids. Thanks.
Abby, just to, just to speak to, uh, Dan's point a little bit, um, as we get, just I'll say it now, we'll remind you guys as we start to get towards budget season. Uh, I'm a firm believer in establishing what your values are, um, as a community and what you want in your school and what you want for your children. And as Dan said, budgeting for that and building your budget based around what your values are. And not, not, not relying on things that are perceived as being extra. Um, and not worthy of taxpayers' money if it's something that is core to your beliefs, whether it's art, counseling, music, any of the things that, that are often. Underfunded. Uh, if you believe as a, as a community, then the board will be the ones that decide this, uh, eventually, that these are core. Um, core programming, not extras, um, that you do build it into your local budget and you figure out how to make it work and you figure out how to pass a budget. So that's, that was my, my advice as we get close to the budget season.
I agree completely. I wasn't part of the budgeting process in the past, but I'm a little surprised that. This is how it went down, so we have to make it right.
Yeah, and I'm, I, I'm obviously not a part of the history that's occurred here, but, I mean, Dan, my, my wife is an artist, uh, you know. Prefer living as well and I totally get it. Yeah, art and music are super important, so I, I view it as core. So let's figure out what we can do.
You got me very excited when you made that comment about your wife's, just to say, thank you.
So, thank you, everyone. I think it's, um, you know, it's fair to say and it's been heard loud and clear to the board. You know, we are coming out of a major whirlwind and we have some options and opportunity here to right the ship. Or we're going into one heck of a storm. We're well aware. So we're battening down the hatches, the ship's getting steered, we're moving, we're moving ahead, but we have to dot dots. And do things responsibly, but also with urgency. We're working with, you know. All new, all new staff, all new board, new superintendent. This can take a very different spin than what experiences have been in this community in the past. And we're all a part of how that is going to move forward. So, um, I hope we continue to have the same community energy that we have been as far as the passion for the children. So, um, that's what I've got to say on that. I think, um, we should probably keep moving on here before we're, uh, we're all. Um, been on there here for too long, gotta go a little bit more to get go, going in the agenda. Um. So we just left off on. The staffing update. Um. Counseling, maybe, okay, we're, I'm, I'm just said to move it along and then I'm, I'm switching it up here. What are Dan, you know, and what are your and Rory's thoughts on maybe? In the meantime, doing a small, paying a portion of for the counseling to ensure counseling and moving for money for that. But holding off on art while I reach out to the art teacher. So we're meeting kind of in the middle with some stuff. We're ensuring counseling's in place because like the reality is. That's something we all know, um, and we all want art, but what, what are your thoughts on that? On, on kind of not moving on both, but maybe at least the counseling?
Well, I think we have to have both, so I, I don't think it's fair to say move forward on one, not the other. However, um, you can fund art with grants, so I mean, there's that thought too, but. If we could come up with a number to split and maybe at least just, um. Uh, give both of these people assurance that we're gonna be moving forward. I'm okay with that. I think, I think that we should probably secure that somehow, even if it's just a small amount for now. Assuming that they will, would accept that sort of arrangement.
Oh.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna echo that. Yeah, I mean, I, I feel comfortable, you know, committing, um, you know, at least to, yeah, I, I don't wanna make a Sophie's choice or. Sophie's choice here on, you know, what's more important, counseling or art?
It's both important.
Yeah, exactly. So, I mean, yeah. You know, once again, haven't seen anything, but, you know, I, obviously, you know, if we do have, you know, the same, the same setup and there's fifty K. You know, surplus, I can't imagine we'd run through all of it, so, you know, I tend to believe, yeah, let's, let's commit to this.
If we're allowed, I don't know. Is that something we can do? Bob?
Well, the kids are already, we, we are budgeted for three hours of counseling, right? And what we're, we're trying to get is four. Is that what it is? So it's not that the kids do not have counseling. The kids are coming in with counseling. Is that correct? Yes.
Okay.
Three hours were in the budget out of, last year was eight.
That's a big drop.
But what I heard Bridget say earlier is that she wasn't, the council wasn't available for the full eight regardless. But that, that's why adding one hour to bring it to four a week was what she was suggesting.
Yeah, I just to jump in to clarify, they do have counseling, so we are gonna get counseling. Um, it's just a little bit condensed. She's not available for eight. The hope would be to go from three to four. Um, and the art teacher is really paid per day that she comes in, so you can set aside a certain amount of money. It's not, um, it's, she, it's not a contract salaried position, so I think just to clarify what I was saying on that.
Okay, so and I'm looking at that as a cost between seven and eight thousand and that would be for the year if she came in on Thursday afternoons. Am I understanding that correct?
Yes, that's just about a full year of her coming at that time, probably a little bit of money in supplies.
Okay. Didn't we are, yeah, I mean, I think that if we were able to commit even half of that amount, I would say, yeah.
Yeah.
Huh?
I'm sorry, just letting Abby know Michael's hand is up.
Michael Pelton, your hand is up.
Alright, thank you. Um, so, like I said, both of those items are like fundraiser type. Are things that can be fundraised for. I don't know about grants in terms of counseling services and, or things like that, but. I do know that grants are available for art. Um, I think if we're concerned. It sounds like Bridget has some serious concerns about whether we're, we can retain the art teacher. Um, and if we're concerned as a community slash board that we're, might lose that position, for instance. And we also feel like we can possibly find some grants to help support that position. Maybe like at the get-go, just deciding to fund a quarter, like the first quarter of the year. Um, that gets us like into the school year, start moving, all the other pieces are in place. We know where the budget is looking and we can make a decision. Or the board could make a decision at that point, knowing a whole lot more. Um, including the possibility of grants being put into place. It sounds like everything comes out in September, so you should have a pretty good understanding at that point. And if the board only, if the board chooses to, you know, fund the first quarter, it's not a huge amount of money, so the likelihood of. The, um, surplus being too small, um, isn't as great. It's not a huge amount of money. In terms of the counseling, like I said before, I really think it's important for. Somebody to revisit it with the counselor to really discuss what goes on, what they feel the school really needs. And I realize that, um, it sounds like they're only available for four, but if it turns out that we need more at the school, then maybe we need to look at another resource. Um, to ensure that we get the appropriate counseling at the school, um, because. I don't know if three hours is enough or four hours is enough, eight hours is the right amount? Last year we had eight, was it the right amount? I have no idea, but the counselor should have a better understanding of that. And if we need eight hours, then we need to find the other four hours somewhere. So I think it's important somebody talks to the counselor and really identifies the need versus just throwing arbitrary, well. We think she's gonna be about available for four, let's hire her for four. I think it's, that's, that's like not a well-informed decision. I think it's important to look at the big picture. We already have her solidified for three, so we know she's on board for at least that. If she says we need more than that, then we need to figure that piece out. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Dan Corby?
Thank you, Abby. Um, I know Michael is always a fan of trying to buy more time and I don't mean that as a dig. In this si- situation, why don't we actually take your advice and buy us half of the year at least? Instead of a quarter, why can't we make a commitment that we're funding it through the holiday period and it gives the board more than enough adequate time? To process what they need to, find the funding, find the grants, but we're committing at least half of the year to the kid. I think we need to start meeting in the middle on things and a quarter isn't getting us there.
I think that's a really good suggestion.
Yeah, so maybe we can think about it that way. Thank you.
And, and I think, uh, you know, on similar lines, let's, let's talk to the art teacher and see what type of commitment they would be looking for, right? You know, it, it, is it halfway? Is it to the end of the year? Is it a pay-as-you-go situation? So.
Uh, I think Bridget mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah.
So. I know that this is, uh. This is, this is clearly very important, right? Um. We, the steps that we have to take here, uh, Daniel needs to connect with Lori. And I need to connect with the art teacher and the counselor. Um, the reason is I do agree with what Michael Pelton did bring up. Um, if what you said, Bridget, if they're not available and they can only provide four hours, but the need is actually ten or fifteen. We should be having to look at a whole different like option and that could be misleading to the kids as well. If we're starting them off with a small amount of counseling that are just familiar faces, but they're segueing into something different. Um, when they could start off with the consistent piece, so, um. I, I think that we have a lot of conversations that we are gonna be having very, really quickly with people. Um, and acting fast. I think that that's really where we gotta go because there's just so many moving pieces. Um, that to really make sure we are finding the best support, but I will say as your new chair. These kids are gonna have the right amount of counseling and they're, we're, we're gonna provide that art with that art teacher because my kids' art is amazing. So we're gonna make this happen. We don't have the answers right now. I can't give you the, the way that's gonna happen, but we're dotting some dots, we're going her, we're going fast. Um, but we're gonna be thorough in what we're doing. So with that, I think we can move on to tuition requests.
Alright, so. All right. So you have, um, let's see. One, two, three, four, you had five previously, the sixth one came to me this afternoon. Um, a family, this is not number of children, this is families. Um, there's two ways that you could consider this. All right. So one way is, and again, we've talked about this from the legal standpoint, um, around the geographical considerations is the legal standard. However, a board can choose to do as they wish. Um, you could, um, you could have a motion to accept all. You could have a motion to deny all. Or if you wanted to take them on a case by case basis and, and hear the merits of each individual student's approach. Um, you would then need to go into an executive session, um, regarding student records, which is what that other executive session is on here for. So I guess your, your three options are to accept all, deny all, or to do it on an individual case by case basis. And because that would involve specifics about the names of the kids and the situation that the parents are talking about, that would require executive session for each one. So you would invite in each particular family, have the conversation and then do that sort of back to back to back to back. And then at the end, make a vote in public session, um, regarding those. Does that process seem what you were expecting? I, I guess I, that's just sort of my off the top, uh, approach. Are there any other questions that you want that I can help you with prior to deciding how you want to go at it?
Oh dear. Well, Bob, you're, uh, you're not the only one new with this, right? So, uh, did we know what we were expecting? Not really. Um, and so I have what was provided in the packet, one, two, three, four, five. So there were five tuition requests that I've been able to review. I don't know who the sixth one was, so. I don't know if we need to have an executive session specifically for that, or if we can table that, or how that would work.
Uh, well, it depends. If you're gonna do them individually, um, then I think you could, I don't even know if that parent is here. Um, again, I just received it at eighteen minutes before the board meeting started, um, an email, um, it just came to me, it did not go to the board members. Um, so I guess if you're gonna do it case by case and you're gonna go into executive session to hear from the families, then that one, um, I think you could still hear that one. Um, because we don't have specific requests listed, you have tuition requests. And this one was received prior to the start of the meeting. So I don't, I don't think it precludes you from acting on that one anymore than it would on the others.
So what I would say is that I can make a motion, however, if it doesn't pass by the board, right? If, if, uh, it's disagreed upon, then we have to make a different motion.
Correct.
And, uh, proceed in that manner, right?
That is correct. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about either the process or, or I guess as you, after you make a motion, then we can discuss each of the, we can just give you more information about the motion that was put forward.
Um, okay. So I am, uh,
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion, uh, that, that we deny the tuition requests that I have received here in front of me that I've read the five. Um, and like a second on that motion.
So you would need a second to have the discussion around it? Um, or if you don't get a second, the motion dies.
We talking about having a discussion or about, or talking about denying?
So a second, what, a second by you would allow the board to have a conversation about the motion. It does not tie you to voting in a certain way for the motion.
Okay.
Ends up the conversation around her motion.
Okay. Well, I second your motion then.
Thank you. And for discussion, um, what I would like to point out is that for the, um, each request that was made, it did not meet that statute. Um, various families had various concerns that they had highlighted that, um, and in my opinion are going to not be, um, an issue with the school year. That's not, that's my goal, uh, as, as being on this board. That's something I'm passionate about. Um, so my view in, in reviewing each of these letters in lieu of highlighting each individual family that put these requests in, um, what Bob had mentioned, what we are, you know, legally binded to approve, um, that these do not meet that criteria.
So just a quick correction, what you just said, you're not legally obligated to approve them if there's geographical considerations, but that's the legal recourse a parent could have. Um, that can be, that the board decision could be appealed to the Secretary of Education. You can still deny it if it was a geographical consideration, but that's the only straight shot to the board, um, having, doing that. Do you follow the distinction I made?
Yes, sir.
Right. Um, and yet I would concur that based on the emails that I've read, that none of them make the claim of geographical consideration.
Still a lot of concerns. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna deny that folks, for the people who sent in their letters, there are valid concerns in every single one of them. Um, and that's not unheard. I just, uh, I, I, it's not something that I feel, um, we need to get into. I'm open to meet with and talk with anybody, uh, who disagrees with me on that. Um, but it does need to be in public session. So, um, Pat McLean?
Hi, it's actually Meredith. Um, so I just want to make sure I understand. Because I did send a, a letter requesting, uh, tuition and I did invoke the geographic, um, clause, and I just wanted to make sure that you're saying I don't meet criteria, or you were, I, I thought you were saying nobody had invoked it. Which I, I did, I guess I just didn't understand.
I'm sorry, um, so if I, uh, if I have this accurate, I want to make sure I'm correct. You currently do not have students enrolled at Wyndham School?
Well, I, we have to enroll him because he needs an IEP and we have been told that's the only way he can get the IEP is to enroll him. So I have the paperwork, I'm working on it, but he is not physically enrolled at this time, but he has to be.
All right. So then I stand corrected. I do remember that. I didn't have that in my pile because I, because not being enrolled, I didn't have them considered for tuition request if they're what, if they weren't a currently enrolled student. So that one I don't, you, you, I do remember you mentioning the geographical thing. I'd have to pull it up, um, to review it. But yeah, so that's a, yours is, oh, yours is a slight difference. I just wanted to clarify that for the board.
Okay.
Yeah, Meredith, we didn't, I didn't see yours. Um, so that will definitely be something, uh, that will not be applying to this motion. Okay? Is that, is that, uh, okay for you for now?
Yeah, I had sent it, I sent it before the last meeting and I, when I went up, I came to bring Beth a paper copy and she said you guys had gotten it. So I didn't realize that you hadn't.
And just, can you please remind me, um, what your name is so I can search my email for that?
It, my last name is Tips McLean, T I P S, like what waitresses make, M C L A I N E. And I think I sent it for my work email.
Yes.
I do have that, um, and it was forwarded to, it was sent to Beth, Abby and Rory and myself.
Okay.
And that was on July eighteenth.
My goodness, Meredith, I did receive that, but that wasn't in the packets. Um, and that wasn't something that I had reviewed for today. Um, I think that at least for these five, uh, we can maybe have an executive session with, uh, Meredith. So, um,
Just to be clear, your, yeah, so your mo-, just to be, yes, I'm sorry to clarify, your motion is the others, not that particular one. And you're gonna table just for now, while this motion is on the, being decided and discussed.
That's correct. Thank you, Bob.
You have, uh, Bridget Blanchard with a hand up?
Go ahead, Bridget.
So, um, was that a total of six families that put in tuition requests?
That is, that is what I have. That's correct.
Okay. How many children does that include? Students.
So this is a thing that I have to learn more about, um,
Um.
And I, the reason I'm, the reason I'm just sort of hedging a little bit on it, I gave a number at a previous meeting. Um, and so that number is kind of floating out there, but what I've since learned is that when we're talking about um, small numbers of kids, uh, the magic number is ten. And so if you're talking about particularly around student data, and I don't know if it relates to this, people, you know, we don't want the kids to become identifiable based on that. So I just want to be clear, um, but I would say it's safe to assume that it's at least as.
Well, it was fifty percent at the last meeting, so I'm, I'm assuming with this new letter, it's more.
It's at least, yeah, the number of children is at least the same number as the families, if not more. You know what I'm saying? I, I guess that's sort of a way to say it without getting myself in any trouble.
Yep. Um, so I, I guess I have questions for the board, like there's more than, you know, fifty percent or more of the parents have put in tuition requests. Um, what are we gonna do about this? Like, we're not even gonna put more money in for the programs that we want. Like what, what can be done about this?
Well, nothing was said about it being, um, not being taken care of. Uh, we are working on that. This is all brand new Bridget, and I hear, I hear your concerns loud and clear. Um, but as I had mentioned, which what will, what, uh, what I will do is we can, uh, send out emails to the families, us, to them directly so that they know which family, just because we're only blanketing them as these five, um, requests. So that way you, families can know specifically, they're not going to just be like, was I one of those people that put in a request? Um, but there's drastic change and shift in every front right now. And change is terrifying to some people, um, but it can also be really incredible and amazing. And we can all get on board and do awesome stuff. So, um, I know that that's really kind of vague, but at the same time, that's, that's kind of where we're at, uh, the, the, what we are required to. There may be one particular request that, um, may meet that criteria. I don't know. I haven't, um, I didn't look at it. It wasn't in my packet today. Um, but for the ones that I do have in front of me, um, the, that criteria isn't meant, other concerns, valid concerns are going to be addressed so that they are no longer concerns for people. Um, thank you. So we got, uh, Aaron Keigho, your hand is up.
So yeah, this question is for Bob. Bob, what is your recommendation to the board?
Well, I guess, uh, I mean, just as a point of order, I would need a board member to ask me for that, not a, not a parent. I don't want to feel like I'm hedging, but I do, I do want to make sure I'm taking my direction from the board.
While I ask.
So Bob, what is your, uh, position on the tuitions?
Um, well, I think, you know, Abby, Abby said, I think, um, the beginning part, that I think we're all aware, there is a large number of families, um, who are dissatisfied. And, um, some of that I think is dissatisfaction based on reading these with the situation in general. Some of it was out of concern around staffing. Um, and, um, and some of it was a concern around services. And so, um, I think that, he, he, I mean, here's the hard thing, okay? You guys, you guys live in a town that's very small. You have a school district that's very small. You have a school as a result of this population that's very small. Um, that is a blessing and a curse, right? In lots of ways. Um, I, I try to be an optimist and believe that with the right people in place, that this, this little school can be an incredibly, um, powerful educational experience for kids. Um, I have concerns as well, um, around some of it. I, I, I came to you guys in June and we talked about setting a special meeting date in July, mid-July, early July, around, you know, maybe potentially, and I made a recommendation, a potential recommendation at that time. Um, and in, in that, in the time since, uh, the board has committed resources to a contract. Um, and so that changes the dynamic of the situation in lots of ways. Um, the school at this point is not in a position, I don't think financially, to, to, to do that one year, don't operate approach that we talked about back in June. I think that at this point, because the cost of tuition plus the contracted amount that would be owed would greatly exceed your budget. Um, so, uh, I mean, that's, that's the reality of where you're at right now. I am concerned as the person who will be supervising all of this, um, that you don't have a second teacher yet. I have concerns that, um, we are a month away from the opening of school. Um, and so I, I would just say that I, I'm, I'm hopeful. I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic and hopeful. Um, and I think we're, we're, we're down the road a piece and we're a different place than we were in June and, uh, you know, my thought around what would be a possible solution in June is, I don't think is a viable option anymore. Um, so I, I think, you know, what, what would the ideal be and what, where, you know, based on where we are now, what is the best case scenario? Those, those might be two different things. I don't know. Um, yeah, in, in from when that I'm new and I'm trying to, trying to build relationships with all of you guys, community members, parents, um, new staff, board members. Um, and it's a complex problem that you guys have here and it's not new. Um, it's, it's, it's caused a lot of stress and angst in the town. It's divided people. Um, I wish I had an easy answer that was like, hey, just do this. It is, everything's gonna be great. I don't. Um, maybe, you know, if I had been doing this job for a lot longer, I'd have more experiences to draw from. Um, but yeah, I, I, I don't see a, a silver bullet answer for that. Um, so I guess, you know, I, 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 I have, I'm an optimist by nature, so I share Abby's optimism around what it could be. Um, I'm also a parent and I share the concerns that some of the parents have too. So it's a tough, it's a tough situation to be in, um. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. That, that's, I guess that's what I got. I know that probably doesn't satisfy some of the people who are looking for me to come one direction or another. Um, but you are where you are. And I think you'll think about what's the best step moving forward and, um, yeah.
Bob, yeah.
So I don't, that's what I got. Sorry.
No, thank you for that. I mean, I guess, you know, I guess the next question to follow up with that would be the same thing. Um, is what would your recommendation be tonight with, with those three options that you offered? Would it be for the board to deny all of them? Like, you know, go into private session with each of them? Um, or, you know, approve all of them, whatever those are, and then table the other one, um, that has been asked to be tabled. I, I guess that would be the next part of it.
That's a reasonable follow-up. Um, I guess what I would say is, um, that if the board tonight decided to grant all of them, um, you would currently be under contract for one teaching principal. You don't have a second or even a third person under contract yet, um, which would give you some financial flexibility. Um, I don't know exactly what that would look like. I'd be worried about that. I'd want to include Lori in a conversation about that. Um, I don't, you know, I don't know if the new teaching principal would be prepared for that type of situation. It's not what we told her it was. I don't know how fair that is as far as trying to develop and implement, uh, lessons to the students who are remaining. I think that could be a challenge based on the breadth and depth of the subject matters and students' needs potentially. Um, and simultaneously, that would leave a very small, well, you know, starting off by saying it's a small school, it would leave the school significantly smaller than it already is. Which would, I would have concerns about social, emotional, um, development of the remaining students. So, I mean, that's, that's where we're at. Just as an observation, I think financially it would be troubling. I think it'd be troubling for the kids who are behind. Um, but moving all of them or denying all of, I'm sorry, accepting all of them would have trouble going back to the original plan. You're already under contract. Um, and denying them means that now they're all here and you gotta deal with, um, sort of healing the community part and figuring out how can you get the programming to meet the needs that the parents have brought up? Um, it, yeah, it's a hard one. I'm really sorry you guys are, are where you're at right now, but this is an incredibly hard situation. I've talked about it with a few colleagues. Um, a few advisors and, and everyone I talked to says, wow, that's, that's a tough one. And nobody has given me any, hey, why don't you try this? So that's where I'm at.
Thank you for being honest. Okay, thank, thank you, Aaron. Is there anything else? You have for Bob?
No, I am all set at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Michael Pelton?
Hi, um, so it sounds like you have four or five that are on the table right now uh, with this motion. And then it sounds like you might have one or two that haven't been addressed with this motion. I think, um, that it would be appropriate to answer the, the parents as soon as reasonably possible. Um, so my thought is that whether you choose to do executive session for all of them or not, um, I think it's important that you answer all of the requests that have been submitted to the board um, to date, including the one that apparently Mr. Tebow got, um, at whatever, a few minutes before in the meeting. I think it's appropriate for, if the board needs to meet an executive session so that they can look at it and have an understanding of what the thing is, then I think it's important that they take a look at it and answer all of their requests so that the parents know what they need to do to move forward. Because if they're looking at enrollment in another school, there are a lot of schools around that enrollment has closed. And I don't know what the flexibility is, for instance, at the Mountain School, but I know there are some schools that have like closed their enrollment in April and they have a waiting list. So I, I think it's important that we get the information out to the parents as soon as possible so that they can make the decisions that they need to make. Thank you.
I, I, Michael, I couldn't agree with you more. I, I think the board has to make a decision tonight. I think we've, it, it's been, it has to happen tonight.
Given that, we've got, uh, the motions on the table and I believe we've had a adequate discussion. So, um, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Um, so we will need to make sure, um, those, I, I agree with the urgency that, um, Michael just shared with regarding, uh, tuition and if people are, uh, these other requests, I don't know. Bob, if we can go with it, like I didn't see that one that you just got. I don't know if we can deal with that tonight so that these, uh, families also can get some answers. Um,
Um, yep, so you, it sounds like you have two outstanding ones currently, the one I received today and the one from the other parent who spoke that was, uh, using the geographical consideration argument. Um, those are the two that you have outstanding at this time. If that's, if I'm understanding what you guys just did correctly.
So is that still, is that still six total then?
Well, I, I believe what you just did, and you, people can weigh in on this, what you just did was denied five families their tuition request. You have two remaining families, one who is not currently enrolled and one that was received late this afternoon.
Yes, that's my understanding.
So, um, if you, because it, because it's a student record matter, um, in both situations, you can go into executive session and, uh, review those two um, requests and then come out of executive session and make a motion and a vote. If you're gonna do that, you're gonna utilize the executive session that's under number two. That's just the one singular motion. You do not need to move to find anything first. You're just making a one singular motion.
Uh, I make a motion for the board to enter, uh, executive session under title one, section three thirteen of the Vermont statute for academic records or suspension or discipline of students, three thirteen A seven. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor? Any discussion?
Alright, so I heard, I heard that you are moving to executive session. I'm gonna begin putting people in the waiting room. And we are back recording. Everybody is in. You want to declare us in, Abby?
Okay, thank you. It is twenty twenty-seven or eight twenty-seven and we are out of executive session and returning to, um, our, our special board meeting.
But I'm gonna start off by just saying in the interest of transparency from the board and from, um, the administration, um, while we were looking at the two, um, requests in executive session regarding students, um, it was, we discovered that we actually had a third, uh, that was received in the last two days while I was on, uh, at my leadership retreat. And that third one, like one of the ones we were considering was also, um, a currently unenrolled student. And so, uh, we, the board, um, discussed that third one, um, with the other two that we went into session to discuss. So that's just for, for transparency.
Thank you, Bob. Um, so with that, uh, I move, uh, to deny the three requests, uh, that we just reviewed. Can I get a second on the motion?
I get your motion.
Okay, any, uh, discussion? Um, what I will say is that they did not, uh, meet the geographic standard for consideration.
Yeah, Dan Corby's hand is up.
Uh, go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Abby. Um, I just want to clarify because there's been like five different numbers thrown around tonight. So we are at a total of eight families that requested tuition for their kids, right? Eight is the final number, uh, as of right now.
There were, there were eight requests. Not all of them were of current students. That's correct.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, um, I don't see any other hands up, so, um, no further discussion? All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes and I believe.
You do have a hand and a clapping. I think it's supposed to be a hand raised though.
I see. I don't see any hands. Might have been a clapping.
Just went down.
Okay, so.
Sorry, I was, I bet, sorry. It's not my computer, so I was not totally familiar with it. It's Meredith again. I just, this is unrelated to what that part was, but I just wanted to say that during the break, I was able to confirm with the Mountain School that they do not have a waiting list. Just because it sounded like there was some confusion about that. I just wanted everybody to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. And I also would like to, uh, share with folks as well, a blanket statement for anyone um, that is navigating any type of special needs, learning about, you know, learning disabilities or advancements. Um, the Vermont Family Network is an amazing resource. Um, I, I do have a list of, uh, families that what I'll do is I'll send a link out to everybody. Um, and they are a fabulous connection, uh, to lots of services. Um, and sometimes a lot of those services can even be covered by, uh, medical insurance and can involve, um, folks coming directly to your home, uh, to help work with your child. So, um, I'm happy to, uh, share any of that, uh, any of helping people navigate any of those experiences because they, they can be really challenging. Um, so if I don't have your email, uh, please, uh, reach out to me to make sure I have it. Um, and were you about to tell me we have a hand raised, Bob?
Yes, there is two hands now.
I wasn't, but we do. Uh, what I was gonna add to that is for the folks who were, who are currently out of the district and look, and were looking for that tuition request, if they're going to enroll their students in school right now, um, if, if you could put them, or if they could email me or Sue Haskins at the, at the central office, we could put them in touch with, um, Jenna Kramer, who can start that process if they wish. And if any of those students happen to also require, um, special ed, um, then we would then connect them with the, um, WCSU Special Education Department. So, um, the next, the first step would be to enroll and then the second step would be to, to talk with the special department. So I just want to put that out there as well for any families that might be connected to, to that. But yes, you do have two hands up.
Okay, Jimmy Corview and then Dan Corby. I'm, maybe Crystal?
Never mind.
Thank you, Crystal. Uh, Dan?
Thanks, Abby. Um, I think it was a generous offer for folks to reach out to you. I just wanted to follow up because I didn't hear a response to Bridget's question earlier tonight. What would be the preferred contact method for you? And you give that to the parents so we know which email address to contact you, so our correspondence are received.
Definitely, A Pelton. So that's A P E L T O N at WyndhamCentralBoard.org. And that is also accessible on various websites. Uh, I think we, one of the other many tasks that we're gonna have is taking on, um, updating our, the, the school website as well. Um, so there's a lot, lot going on, but thank you, Dan, for clarifying that. Um, Rory, you wanna shout out your email as well, just so that people have it?
Yeah, it's R R O S S E L O T at WyndhamCentralBoard.org. I can spell that again, if need be.
And then once Daniel's set up with his email, we'll make sure everyone has it as well. Um, I know some families have received some emails already, um, from me. If you haven't and you feel I don't have the correct email, um, please reach out because we are gonna be trying to improve, uh, you know, that collaboration and making sure, um, we're hearing, we're hearing what the parents need. So, um, is there any other? Alright, uh, with that, I'm going to move to adjourn the, the, the meeting at twenty, oh, sorry, no?
Well, you have that, that third potential executive session I talked about again.
Yep. Oh, son of a biscuit. Okay, um,
So this.
Which number one is that? That is the number three again?
Yep. And so I can read the language, um, that you can then say so moved to, and then you guys can second. That way you don't have to, to read it because I don't have it on the agenda, but, um, I will tell the community that there won't be any action coming out of this. This is informational only. So there will be no action coming out of this particular executive session. It sounds like Abby was planning to adjourn after that. So just so folks know. And what I will need you to so move and second is, um, that you find that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved with substantial disadvantage regarding pending or probable civil litigation or a prosecution to which the public body is or may be a party.
So moved.
Second?
Then you need to vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the second part of this is, um, uh, hold on, lost it. Um, I think it's the same. So then you are to make a motion for the board to enter executive session under title one, section three thirteen Vermont statutes, legal consultation, um, three thirteen A one.
So moved.
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, I will move folks to the waiting room until they.
Twenty thirty-five, entering executive session. Again, thank you for your patience.
Alright, we are back to recording and everybody is out of the waiting room.
Excellent, uh, so you already had mentioned, uh, Bob, that there's not, uh, anything coming out of that executive session. So I guess we can say at twenty forty-six, eight forty-six, uh, we have, uh, entered back into the special board meeting. And, uh, we are going to, I, I move to adjourn. Can I get a second?
I second your motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thank you, everybody. Dan, if you could stay on so I can get contact information from you. Um, everybody else, have a great night.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.